The meeting to order. And at this time, I would like to welcome all the residents of Chate. I know this is a very difficult time for you and the nation. I'm hoping that your accommodations are good and that everything is being looked after. I will call for the adoption of the agenda. Are there any errors? Omissions, additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions to the agenda.
Okay, anyone else? No, could I have someone move in?
One moment, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. All in favor? I think our sergeant is busy. We have an additional thousand residents, so we're just making sure everybody's safe. So Sergeant Mike Burns is not here. I can't answer any of your questions, so if he shows up towards the end of the meeting, we will talk with him then.
He did provide his statistical report.
The minutes of our April 25 meeting. Are there any errors there? If not, could I please have someone move them? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Could I have someone move delegation business for information?
I can move that.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? So just a brief report. I did attend a Northern Lights Forest... Oh, there he is.
Sorry, I was late. I was in Chate.
Come forward. We will go back to you. We just accepted your report.
Oh, that's good. We'll do that again next time.
So welcome, Sergeant Burns. I just explained to everybody that we have a thousand new residents for a while, so you probably were pretty busy making sure our community was safe.
Yeah, it's gonna be... Things are gonna be picking up for the next foreseeable future. I just came back from Chate. It's a mess. There's nobody going back there anytime soon. It's...yeah. The Third Prairie is basically underwater. All the detachment housing, it's...the basements are flooded. The detachment is starting to flood. There's...everybody that works in Chate is in Rainbow right now. They're gonna have the road...we're gonna have the road blocked so nobody can get back in there because we're hoping that people that are staying over here at the rink don't get fed up and want to go back home because they're not gonna be able to get in there. They're talking...the people that stayed, there was a few people that stayed, now they're starting to come out because they realize that it's a lot worse than what they were thinking they thought. And they're probably headed this way. Paddle Prairie is...I don't know if anybody's been up that way, but it's almost underwater as well. There was talk of them going to Manning, evacuating to Manning, but we don't know if the roads are gonna stay open. Now, I called later this afternoon and I spoke with Justin Cadet, the SIO down there, and he said the water levels were receding, but we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope so. He doesn't see the need to have an evacuation yet, so we'll just play that by ear. If it is the case, they had some rig mats...there was a washout in Kent River. That road is still open, but I heard this afternoon that some of these rig mats that they're using on the road are floating away, so they're gonna send a crew to try and get that looked after. I know the road is closed north of Meander to the border right now, but they should...they foresee that to be about a four-hour closure until they get the road repaired and opened up again. And that's all I have right now. I've got extra resources coming up. I got five guys that come up from Grand Prairie today. I'm gonna try and keep them here for at least a week. We know business is gonna pick up, I think, when things kind of get...the weather gets good again, and it's supposed to be sunny tomorrow afternoon, I believe. So when people get out and start wandering around, it's gonna pick up for us, so we're gonna try and...Chate was asking for resources down there, and I said, "Why? Everybody in Chate is here anyway." So we'll keep them here, and if you guys can't get in there to patrol, they can't get in there either, so we can give you somebody to keep the road blocked, but I'm keeping all the resources here because this is where all the people are so far, unless I get over the road.
So it's my understanding that they are transporting the people from La Verena to a camp in Rainbow.
Okay, that's news to me.
Well, it's news to us, too. We didn't hear anything about it. The CAO got news at 5:30 this evening.
I just came through West Souza Creek there, just west of the Chinchaada River, and it's probably a foot under the bottom of the bridge, and the water's going out, so if it gets up over the road, it's gonna be...whoever's here, whoever's on that side is gonna stay on that side, whoever's on this side is gonna be on this side, so it could be...and it could be a totally different story tomorrow. But one thing I do know is if the water's receded tonight and everything started to dry up tomorrow, it's gonna take ten months to clean up those basements. There's raw sewage going into everybody's basement, so it's a biohazard right now, or it will be.
Counselor Welkey?
The health center, how was it? The state of the health center out there?
Uh, in Chate?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody can get in there right now. We couldn't get down the road in front of it.
Oh, okay.
We had to go the back way.
Because it's actually in that...almost in that same area as the detachment, just...
Yeah, it's a little lower than the detachment, and I know the water was right up to the running boards on the trucks. And they're driving F-250s, so the ground clearance is pretty high, so I don't know how they're gonna get anybody into the health center there. But everybody, most, almost ninety-five percent of the population is here already anyway.
Yeah, I just know there's a lot of supplies and resources in there, so I don't know what...yeah.
Now, the airstrip is still open in Rainbow, and, you know, if we have to do medevacs or anything like that, that's doable.
So do the people of Rainbow know that the road could be flooding?
I'm not sure. When I...by the time I got there, I was told that by...I can't think of the gentleman's name, but Aaron, who works at Le Prairie. He told me they were monitoring that. He was giving me all the road reports. So when I went through there today, I stopped at the West Souza Creek and had a look, and it's pretty high, and the water's moving fast. Even the Chinchaada is very wide, and there's a lot of lumber there, a lot of logs and lots of...yes. So it's gonna be something we're gonna have to check on hourly, not hourly, but a few hours.
What's happening north that the road's closed? That's not the Hutch Lake?
Yeah, it's just north of Hutch Lake. Now, on 5/11...
South of Hutch Lake, isn't it?
No.
No, which is north.
Okay.
North.
Sorry.
Just south of Meander, yeah. And if that road gets cut off, we're gonna have to use Hay River from Coles to Meander.
Hay River's flooding right now, too.
Sorry?
Hay River's flooding right now to their old town.
Oh, is it? Yeah, because everything here goes north.
Yeah, they've evacuated lower Hay River.
Okay, they, okay. Yeah, so...
Okay, is there any questions of the staff side, or sergeant?
Madam Mayor, just an update for counsel and for the sergeants. I said there...Ruth just said there's about twenty people left in the arena, so about forty people are under in the lake.
Okay, but the hotels are still full?
As far as we know. We don't know how many that transferred. Oh, we've had contact with the moms, the people at the arena.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm around if you need me. Just give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have an evacuation center?
I know. I think about the month times I've said that today and yesterday. Okay, so we've already approved the...
Should I remove the movement?
No. I just received approval. So back to my report. On April 25th, I attended the Northern Lights Forest event. It was kind of a brainstorm session on getting this going again. Natalie Morris and Karen Smith are helping, John Thurston, and we're working on a proposal for some of the ideas that we had in applying for FREA grant money for education. April 30th, I attended the ketchup, which was so fantastic. Too bad Ruth wasn't here. I want to thank the whole staff of the town for organizing this. It was just what we needed to see people again and talk about the wonderful things that we're doing, and the hot dogs and coke and stuff. Our hamburgers were tasty, and they were provided by Toco and Tim Horton's Coffee, and I just want to thank the community for attending and making it so successful.
Bouncy houses.
What?
Bouncy houses.
Well, the bouncy houses were a hit, so I can't wait till Canada Day because we're going to unveil two more bigger ones that couldn't fit in the arena. On May 6th and 7th, I had the pleasure of driving to Yellowknife and back with Counselor Jessiman and Counselor Anderson. Now, thank Counselor Anderson for his great driving yesterday because it was awful.
I thought it was awful.
No, not his driving. The conditions were awful.
We didn't hit it.
No, we didn't, but it was scary eight times. So we did talk to a ton of people. Once again, it was a fantastic event, and we spoke to numerous people, and not one of them said...everyone had a great thing to say about High Level, about the hotels, everything, so they love coming here, they love staying here, so that's fantastic. And that's...oh, today, I did an interview with...who was it with? Ted?
Yes, 6:30.
6:30 Ted, and I also did an interview with Global. And, you know, it's sad to see that we have a thou...over a thousand people here again, and we've been lobbying for this evacuation center for three years now, and it would have been fantastic to have it here. So that was kind of the gist of our conversation, was the need in this area. And we've been going at this since 2003 with evacuations to our community, and it's just sad that they can't all be in the same place. And we all know that hotels are not the place to stay when you have a bunch of kids and there's no activities there, so we appreciate our great hotels, but we certainly hope that, you know, we can provide our evacuees in the future with a great place to stay. So that's my report. Any questions? And can I have someone move my report? Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carrie. Deputy Mayor?
April 26th, I delivered the thank you letters from the town council to the businesses on my list. On the 27th, I did the second session of the Collected Officials Education Program on service delivery. On April 29th and 30th, I attended the Alberta Association of Police Governance Conference in St. Albert. Very, very interesting. Was really surprised to find out, and Counselor Jessiman would be in the thick of this, the RCP have no formal training for new detachment or even existing detachment commanders in terms of the role and functions of community policing groups, you know, outside the larger centers where there's actually police commissions. There was a great presentation from Calgary Police Officer, Counselor Cat Millmine was his name, on bullying against here. I got his information. I'd like to pass that on to Mike McCann of Fort Tremont School Division. It's a personal story. It's compelling. He has a company set up that he runs this through, and all of the money goes back into the charity to try and prevent bullying. And I think it would be a great presentation, whether the school division does it on its own, whether the town was the partner, and put something like that on. He talks nonstop, right off the cuff, for about an hour and a half, and it's a super compelling story. I really think it would hit home with a lot of kids. We had some interesting presentations. One was on the future of automated vehicles and the challenges to policing that those may prevent. And despite what our thoughts were about the province's plans to introduce provincial police force, the association is there to lobby government and other things, but not to try and determine how they provide policing, so it would be members that would be doing that and not the association itself. Next year's conference is in Rocky Mountain House. On May 3rd, I did a training session on Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act, and on May the 4th, did the third module of the service delivery through EOP. That's it.
And how was that course going?
Good. It's what you would expect. It's, you know, on setting service levels and meeting needs of the community and how do you determine those and all the rest, and things will be go through in budget, but it's still interesting nonetheless.
Good. Thank you. Questions for Deputy Mayor? No? Okay, Counselor Anderson?
On April 30th, I also attended the ketchup event at the Curly Rink, and I will echo the mayor's sentiments. It was well done and very well attended, and I thought, like she'd said, you know, it was something that I think everybody was looking forward to, to get out and meet people and be able to socialize a little bit. May the 4th, the Golden Ridge Society meeting, and at that one, it was...they have set aside May 27th and 28th for their grad sale, and they're also going to serve hamburgers and hot dogs on both those days. So they are looking for gently-used goods to put in their grad sale. And then, May 6th, 7th, I also traveled south...or south...traveled north to the Yellowknife Trade Show. And I...it was very well done, lots of people, and we did talk to lots and lots of people. That's all I have.
And too bad if CSS wasn't here because the bags were a hit.
Yes, we didn't have enough.
Any questions? Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Dwyer? Coming to us live and...
On April 30th, I also attended the ketchup event, so yeah, very good castle, definitely a hit. And then today, I traveled to Kenmore, and tomorrow, and until Thursday.
Thank you. Counselor Jessiman?
On April 30th, I attended the event here at the arena, the ketchup. It was a great, great event. I enjoyed it. Again, everybody I talked to was excited to get out, and again, I want to thank all the hard work that went into it from the staff here and put on such an amazing event. And then on the 5th and 6th, I...or 6th and 7th as well, I traveled to Yellowknife to attend the trade show up there, and again, it was great to be there. People that were from the community were very appreciative that we came up there and very thankful, so...and again, everybody that we talked to was so appreciative of the community and being able to stop here. I was quite surprised. I didn't expect we'd have as big a turnout, being a booth of the town, but everybody that came by stopped and had something good to say and asked questions and took our new brochure that we have, which was a huge hit, too, so...
Yes.
Yeah, it was a great trip, and that's it for me.
It's amazing how many people didn't know there was a town on the other side of that road, and they looked at the new display, the new map, and they go, "Wow, there's a old town there," sort of like us, I guess, going through Fox Creek or the White Forest. But yeah, they were really impressed. Any questions for Counselor Jessiman? Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On April 30th, I also attended the ketchup event, which, again, I agree with everyone else, it was a really, really good turnout. I think it was my...well, it's great to see everybody there. Lots of help from the community, that's for sure. Had to wear a few different hats. Those are with the...from the fire department, we had a few people pick up some applications, so hopefully that actually turns into some more recruits. And then we also set up a table for Halal Little, which was nice to have some...we had a lot of registrations, so I'm really happy to be able to have that event, and because we missed out on the spring sign-up we usually have throughout the early April, I believe. So we actually had a lot of turnout there. We have over 113 kids joining the baseball, which is, I think, one of our biggest turnouts ever, so that was...it was a really good opportunity to have that. Other than that, I have nothing else to...
Thank you. Question? No? Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Welkey?
I only have one meeting to report. CDC meeting on April 27th with Northern Lakes. I don't have any notes to report for that. That's my only meeting.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move Counselor Committee reports?
Sure.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie. The action list. Any questions?
Do you want me to preempt, Counselor?
He's waiting.
Oh, that's... Could we have an update on the SSAA and the annexation, please?
Madam Mayor, as reported at the last meeting, three of the documents that have been agreed on by both parties are ready to go. There were some glitches with the franchise agreement. We've reached out to the county, and it appears that the legal counsel of the county has been dealing with this on leave of absence. The fielding counsel decided to add everything back in without consulting his client before he did, so the county did not ask for the changes. That was the legal counsel. So Mr. Peters, myself, and the two legal councils meet this week to give the new legal counsel for the county an understanding of what we're actually trying to do. So he was thinking it's utility that spreads out in the county that people attach to. He did not understand that it is our water line, that we give water as a courtesy, and all the county's looking for is that continues. So hopefully, we can straighten that up this way. I believe it's later in your agenda, so not to preempt it horridly, but I think we're aiming at June 8th to sign those agreements.
Okay, thank you. That satisfies your...
It satisfies as information, sure.
Could I have someone move the action list, or if there aren't...oh. I had one, sorry. Turn the page. I just have a question on the broadband. Sorry. So I have a question, a real question, not that I've been thinking about for a long...well, a week, because I got my update from SpaceLink about when my space on the satellite's gonna be available, and it's gonna be available as early as the end of 2022. The satellites are now in Peace River, Alabasca, so just wondering why the government would spend billions and billions of dollars and not just give every northern resident like 600 bucks to buy this link?
Madam Mayor, that's a question I want to give you an answer to.
But in all your conversations, have they...
It's been brought up as an alternative, but it's just one alternative. There are many. I don't know if they know how well this is getting to work in the long run, in the long run.
I get it. Like, how do you get up there to fix it if it goes out or your satellite? I don't know. Those are questions that I've been wondering about, but I'm...yeah, I'm just thinking, wouldn't it be a waste of money if this is the next step?
I will look into this and get back to you as soon as I can.
Has anyone else wondered that?
Just with my research, Madam Mayor, it does seem that fiber is a lot faster and reliable than the Starlink. I have heard reviews that it is. It can be spotty. It's quick, but it can be spotty because it does have to travel up in space and come back down here, so...
I think I can wait for it to go on.
There's also, I believe, regulation issues, too, because eventually, it's gonna be overcrowded, right? And I know from what I've been reading that there's issues with NASA having to try and take pictures of the sky and then have those satellites get in the way, so there might be regulation issues in the future as well.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah, I've also heard that if there's a sunspot activity, which occurs on a regular basis, it can interfere. And sometime in the last two months, one of their new rockets blew up, destroyed the forty new satellites that were supposed to go into orbit, so obviously, there's issues with that, that fiber wouldn't have, although a whole operator may interfere in the...you know, and for individual users, you're sure if you're, you know, waiting to do this, I think, out of that general business perspective, you just can't have those interruptions in service?
Exactly. Yeah, well, those were just questions because I've never heard any answers about it, or...I get it, you know, maybe it's not safe, maybe Elon's stealing your data, I don't know.
So is it being promoted mostly for the residential user? Is...or is it being promoted for, I believe, corporate business and everything?
For corporate business, you can sign up for a much more expensive option.
Yeah.
Like thousands of dollars more. It's faster speeds, too.
Maybe it has redundancy or something.
But the idea is to give more rural areas or, you know, third world countries a lot better access to internet because the majority of the world does not have access.
And the Ukraine has access because of it. Not that I'm an Elon Musk fan.
Considering it was designed for remote users and they're starting in the central U.S. and moving their way up.
Well, I thought they started in Labrador.
I'm not sure where they started in Canada, but as you said, there's people in Edmonton that have had this for a year.
Yeah, people in Calgary, right there. Yeah, I get it. Anyways, I just thought, why waste billions of dollars if we can all just...all right, thank you. Is there any other questions on this list, Council action list? Could I have someone move it, then? Could I have someone move it then? Thank you, Councilor Lambert. All in favor? Carry. Upcoming events, this was another thing that was really good. Like, people looked at the events on that Ruth or whoever Jenna had put there and they were really interested in it and they were taking pictures of it. And they said, well, we're planning our holidays and we might only come as far as High Level, so.
Oh, okay.
From Yellowknife and they said, you guys have rodeos there? Wow, I've never seen a rodeo. I'd love to come.
Carnival?
Yeah, Carnival.
Put a bit of attention, the dates and the rodeos, yeah.
So yeah, that was really good to have that there. Is there any questions about the upcoming event sheet? If not, could I have someone move it?
Oh, move it.
Councilor Welke, all in favor? Carry. The monthly report to council. Is there any questions? I just had a question, CIO. Continued with the joint, on what? On joints?
I should say projects. I'm not sure how that would get cut when I was reorganizing them. We are still working on the water sewer project and of course, with Mr., actually, the Dene administration's braver the multipurpose facility, but with Mr. Asil's back working in their economic development, he's shown a renewed interest in doing this thing. We'll be, we'll be a number of emails this morning.
Yeah.
Is he done?
Yeah. He's now their Director of Economic Development, no, Director.
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 That's great, thanks.
Yeah? All right, if there's no questions on it, could I have someone move it, please?
I'll move her in.
Councilor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. And the financial support. Financial support. Got it on my mind. Oh, I have one. Can I back up this one? I may have been sleeping, Director Strong, but the new applicator, is that new, another new one? The hot applied crack ceiling?
No, Madam Mayor, that was the project that was approved last year and it's being delivered this spring.
So it's never arrived?
No.
There's two. There's the pothole and then there's.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to highlight that we did get official confirmation through the ACAP program for both the airport runway lighting project at 745,000 and the new plow truck at 335,000. So those are two great Transport Canada programs for the town.
Yeah, that's amazing. I knew about the first one six months ago.
Now you can announce it.
Now I can announce it?
Now you can announce it.
Councilor Lambert?
Sorry for, for, just another, sorry to backtrack as well. With the pothole?
What's called it, pothole, patcher?
Patcher, yeah. Is there any spots in towns that, that have been used that we can see?
Last year, we did some trials late year and did arrive late and used to get this.
Oh, it has been used, yeah.
The ground is a little cold and very wet and it's kind of pointless. As soon as it dries out, we'll be able to get after it quickly. As, as an interim thing, we're just putting cold millings in to make the potholes slightly smaller. We did have to close the street between the brick and the mobile gas station there. We had barricaded it off. It was that, it had failed that badly. So as soon as the snow is gone, we'll put some millions in there until it's warm enough to apply the, the products.
Was that this week it was closed?
Yeah, it was closed on Saturday.
So how long does it have to be to use them?
It should be in the plus temperatures.
Okay.
Through the day. The biggest issue we're dealing with right now is we're still in groundwater stage. You notice a lot of our cracks, water is coming out of them. And that it's pointless to do any work in potholes if you have water coming up through the bottom. We've got to get them dried out first, so. As soon as the weather and the groundwater goes down a little bit, again, another water issue. As soon as that goes down, we'll be, we'll be full into it. We're all queued up and ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back on track to the financial report.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will present that or answer any questions Council may have.
Council? We don't want to go backwards.
I'm looking for information.
All in favor? Carry. So back to the National Police Federation that we tabled for news from the deputy mayor, which he didn't bring any news that we can use.
So I discussed this with several people and I didn't come across any community that was in favor of it, so.
Of this letter?
No, 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 of the provincial police force.
Oh, yeah. So you, who moved, we did have a motion on that, did we not?
Yeah, it was just a table.
Oh, I thought we had a motion and then we tabled it. So does somebody want to make a motion to send this letter in support of the RCMP then? No, thank you. Councilor Jessman? All in favor? Carry. Tricouncil, wow, there's a dinosaur from the past.
Madam Mayor, the town of Rainbow Lake and Mackenzie County have proposed the date of June 8th. So that would be late afternoon for the tricouncil meeting. It's usually a supper meeting. And they have informed us that this, the town of High Level is turning to host.
I suggest that they have it at their new arena.
The terms of reference were that these meetings were always to be at High Level.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're hosting, we're hosting it. Yeah, we always, I know, I just thought it would be great. How could, was there something in my package about that?
We just received an email and I sent it out to Council.
Oh, so there was nothing in here?
No, that was just the date. There was no other.
Okay. So does this work for everyone?
What time would it start?
See, normally there's five.
Oh, is it?
It's a six.
It's supposed to be five thirty? Five thirty?
And then June 8th is what day of the week?
It's a Wednesday.
Your retired wasn't there?
Is this part of new business or old business or where is this?
Part of new business, 13-1?
The first thing?
No, it's on the agenda though.
Oh, okay.
Does this work for everyone? June 8th at 5:30. Usually 5:30 supper and then 6:00 the meeting starts.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you can come in at 6:00. You have our permission. Could I have someone make a motion then, please?
Make the motion.
Councilor Lambert, all in favor? Carry.
Madam Mayor, I will have the other two municipal officials on.
Okay. The organizational chart.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Carson's will present that. Council? Heard your questions.
Madam Mayor, Council. Effectively, we've made some minor changes. One of the big ones with me being a little bit silly and I left somebody off that I should have had on the, the original one that you saw in December last year. However, the effective changes have no impact on, on budget. So it's minor, minor changes. I don't know if there's any specific questions.
Anybody have questions? I just saw Holy Mount. We have a lot of cool stuff. No wonder it's always, you're always looking for casual cool stuff. Got to put our older kids in swimming. No questions? Can I have someone move the new org chart then?
Can you move that?
Okay, Councilor Welke, all in favor? Carry. Thank you. RFD to write-off uncollectible accounts.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will address that.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
So administrations have gathered our total uncollectible and receivables, utilities and taxes as presented. Majority of our receivables, uncollectibles, there is one vendor that went to receivership for about $95. And the other parking and landing fees are just one, one-off accounts that come in. So our current process is to invoice out any of the landing or any of the fees at the airport. So that makes up majority of that in finance charges. A lot of our vendors just choose not to pay the finance charges and just pay their invoices as they go. And so, so we're usually left with a little bit of an amount at the end of the year. Our utility accounts that we have for write-offs is, you'll see the highlighted, the four highlighted accounts have been sent to collections. So those would fall under previous owners that no longer own the property, but we send them to collections and also renters of properties where we don't transfer the taxes to, we don't transfer the taxes to a property if the owner is no longer the owner at the time of a renter. So they also go to collections. And the smaller accounts on the utilities, it's just a timing with owners, our transfer of land have paid off the bill, but they've missed that last penalty of $4 or $2. So they just didn't pay the, the full bill when they, when they brought in payment for their utilities. And taxes, the major one is our property that we had a pro auction last year. So the reserve bid was met, but unfortunately, we had a lot more owing on the properties. So if there's any questions, I'll take them.
Any questions? Yes?
So when we're putting the reserve bid, it's typically the assessed value. But if the tax debt is more than that, do we have the opportunity to have that on and make that the reserve price?
Yeah, we definitely could. So usually, you have the option to, majority of the time municipalities use the assessed value. Or they, the municipality pays for, say, a market value or appraisal value price on the properties. But in this case, we haven't had an auction at the town for a number of years. This year, we do have about four, four properties so far on our auction list that is going to be coming to council. But it's, it's always an option to, you don't have to set the reserve bid as the assessed value. We do give the total amount owing in levies and penalties. So that's, that's council's decision of what they want to set those reserve bids as.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have someone move this then? Deputy Mayor? All in favor? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. RFD to transfer to airport reserve.
Madam Mayor, the, the RFD was, our request for decision was presented to Council, but just as a quick background. The town of High Level was for several years instituted an airport improvement fee, which is placed on the bill to incoming aircraft as passenger fee. The original intention of this was to build up an airport reserve. For several years, that money was used to go directly into the operating of the, of the airport. In 2019, we came back to Council with the budget and suggested that from then on, that that money go back in even if there is an operating deficit in the airport, that that passenger fee or airport improvement fee be placed or put against what it was originally levied for. So Council, her administration is, is recommending that we move money over into the airport reserve. In 2020, 48,000 was transferred to the reserve. It was transferred back out to purchase equipment. No more money was put into the reserve. Sorry, the annual budget for that is $90,000. In 2021, we received a short $74,000 in passenger fee and no transfers made of funds in that year. And in 2022, the Council has budgeted for 90,000. Our fees run from anywhere between, well, the 77 is probably the low because of the year in question. But they often run in the hundred to $120,000 a year range. So our recommendation is to top up the fees from 20 and 21, passenger fees into the reserve and to allocate the 2022 budget to the reserve as well.
Is there any questions about how that works? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
So with the federal government, their regional transportation initiative, when do we anticipate receiving the balance, the 187, 1610?
Director Phillips?
We'll be putting in the next claim, I believe it'll be, I'll have to double check. It's end of March of 2022 is when our deadline is. So we submitted our claim in September of 2021 and received $187,000 from our, it was our first claim term up to September of 2021. So now we do from October 1st to March of 2022 is our second claim. So we'll be getting the rest of the balance of the 348,000 in that second claim. So we will be getting, and we only did receive the $187,000 in our 2022 budget year.
Do we have to claim it?
No, but it is.
It's automatic.
It's a very simple process. We just supply our deficits and they give us a check.
So what's our intention for the, the extra $126,000 from that program?
So, so what we're looking at is 58,000. So in, in the long run, it should be 290,000. It's essentially to make up for the other revenues that the airport did not collect over the two years.
Any other questions? Could I have someone move that, please? I can move it. Council Dwyer? All in favor? Carry. The next one is the RFD budget allocation to the Airport Task Force.
Madam Mayor, this was discussed at a previous council meeting to look at the projects of the Airport Beautification Task Force and bring forward a budget. The budget would be taken from the airport reserve, which now has money in it, thank you, Council. And the proposed budget is presented to Council there. The Council has approved the terminal painting and renovations of 68,000. The proposed budget for the terminal flooring replacement is 65,000. And Director Straub has asked for the other 17,000 for miscellaneous fixtures and furnishings.
Any questions? The Airport Beautification Task Force will answer them for you.
I have a question.
Yes?
The terminal flooring replacement, is that a pretty secure estimate? Or is this something that when we act, when you actually get an estimate, it's going to be 100,000?
No.
Possibly. That, that's the first initial budget price. It will have to come back to Council, so. We haven't tendered. We're always from tendering that work. And again, it depends on the time of the year. But that's, that's the supplier's basic estimate. But until we tender, we won't know. And that work isn't planned until the fall. So the intent of the task force is to finish all kiosks, painting and interior work and then send out tenders for the removal of the existing floor and the coating of the new floor. And then we'll know exactly. And then again, this is a budget and it's just an estimate. And like everything else, it's more, more behoven to the people who tender the, respond to the tender process. Councilor Anderson, if it does exceed the budget price that Council sets, the beautification task force would have to come back to Council for additional money.
Thank you.
Any other question? Could I have someone move that, please?
I'll move alternative one, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Welke moves alternative one. All in favor? Carry. Correspondents for information? Could I have someone move that for information?
I have 15 left for information.
Thank you. All in favor? Carry. So that ends our public portion. I'd like to thank our town team for assisting with the evacuation, evacuees, I should say, and all the support that they have offered to the evacuees. I know you guys. I know you guys put in a very long night, so thank you very much, and we'll talk to you again. Good night.